Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Gulf Shore City Council Work Session Meeting, November the seventeenth. Thank you for being here. I will call the meeting to order and we've got a special council period from Councilman Joe Garris, who's not here. Anybody else want to take that with anyone? If not, we'll move on. City Administrator has got an MOU discussion with the Airport Authority.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a memorandum of understanding to authorize the mayor to sign this MOU with the airport for a $1.5 million loan. The $1.5 million would be used by the airport to design an expansion to the existing terminal for more holdroom space. Currently, the airport has been very successful and has already run out of space for the passengers, and this would allow for designing that expansion to hold another 200 or so people. Jesse is in the audience. He has anything to add?
Counsel, good evening. Nothing really more to add to that particularly, other than we are problems are a really good one that we're having here, and that's that air service is highly successful out of Gulf Shores. And so this is for the design activity related to that, so we can pursue the expansion. So that's what this is.
Jesse, you want anything?
Not particularly. It's been successful. I think it is what we said it is. It's basically to, when the initial terminal was designed, it was designed thinking, we didn't have air service at the time, so it was designed for a regional jet, which is about 60 or 70 passengers. With the lobbying with Allegiant, they wanted a presence in our airport and brought the Airbus 320 and 737s here, which seat about 180 people. So the original terminal design that we secured and built was for the smaller regional jets, and we're already kind of at capacity with one full Airbus 320 with 180 passengers. And so what we're limited out there to is is one plane on the ground at a time. And so as we've had success with Allegiant and increasing the frequency, I know people probably saw the announcement here recently that we have about a 30% increase in number of flights coming into Gulf Shores for the upcoming year. You know, the opportunity to have two planes at once, or possibly even have a crew stationed here in Gulf Shores opens up a lot more potential and opportunities. So this design is to make that capacity a reality at Gulf Shores International, so.
One comment and follow-up. Jesse, you don't have to get up. I'm just going to follow-up on a comment, a statistics you provided at the last meeting. Forty-three percent of the passengers were first-time visitors, which means 53% are regular visitors or had been here before. And part of our goal with this airport was to provide a different means of transportation, hopefully reduce some of the traffic on the road. So I would imagine a pretty good bit of that 53% is now flying in here instead of driving in here, which was a really strong number, I thought, and really plays well into what some of our goals were.
And with this expansion, it continues to allow for more growth and to get to the point where it is becomes a much more significant opportunity for tourism. And we can't do that unless we build the ability for having a terminal that will support it. So that's the purpose of this. And I didn't mention earlier, but this is a committee, the whole meeting, and this is where you get to ask any questions or make any comments that you'd like it on anything at any time. You've got to raise your hand, and I'll call on you, come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and tell us what you think. That's the purpose of this meeting, is for you to provide input to us. So saying all that, is there any questions or comments on this particular issue from the audience? If not, again, next. Lee? Go Mesa?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. This is a request to accept a proposal from WAS Design to perform professional services for the Gulf of Mexico Energy Security Act, which is called GO Mesa, for the construction of the design of pedestrian parks on the north and south sides of the new pedestrian bridge, and an amount not to exceed $190,000. Now, this is the first, you all may not have heard, you all in the audience, that we were awarded the GO Mesa grant for about $3.6 million. It's the first, it's not the first time we've gone after a GO Mesa grant, but it's the first time we've actually received a grant. So and it couldn't have come at a better time, as the pedestrian bridge is under construction. We only have, in the current bill grant, we have allowances for sidewalks on both sides of the elevator towers to get back to the sidewalks on 24th and 25th. But that's all the funding that we had for the pedestrian bridge project to get folks to and from the towers. So this grant is a great addition to that. We'll be able to design these as pedestrian parks, little pocket parks on both sides of the Intracoastal. So we're really excited about receiving this grant. WAS Design did help us with the conceptual design for the grant application. That's the image you see to the right. Intracoastal is kind of running through the middle. You can see the ghosted-in pedestrian bridge going across with the pedestrian park on the north side and then on the south side. There's a portion of Canal Road that kind of L's out along the Intracoastal that we're also, it's part of the closed right-of-way, and we'll be designing and constructing that portion as well. So this was one of 23 projects. It was funded through this round of GO Mesa grants. This will create an opportunity for passive park space while, you know, events are not going on in these locations. But we, the initial design was done for events and gatherings and festivals to be held at the foot of the bridge on both sides. Again, the estimated construction cost for this project, as it's currently designed, is $3.6 million. All of the funding for the project, for the design and the construction, will be paid for through the GO Mesa grant. It's estimated to take about 18 months for design and construction. And we're starting with the schematic design, but we're actually, we've included a phase for schematic design in the project. So it may not look exactly like that image that was just on the screen. That image on the left here is a 3D illustration of that design at the pedestrian bridge, the tower, the elevator tower, and base of the tower. There are some concepts that we went through for that. But this proposal will include another round of schematic design, which is a conceptual design, before we get into design development. Design development is what we typically refer to as 30% construction drawings and 60% construction drawings. So we'll start with the concept, and then we'll get into the actual CDs. Those CDs will include erosion, control, hardscape, landscape, planning plans, irrigation, lighting design, site furnishings, a project manual, which is all the specifications for the project. And then WAS is going to help with the bidding and also negotiation, and then construction observation. So as the project is being constructed, they'll be out, you know, taking regular visits out there and helping us as we run into issues out in the field during construction. But one difference here is that this year, since we created the Capital Projects Department, Clinton Gabe will actually be overseeing the construction of the project in-house. So we won't be hiring an external firm to do what we call the C E N I, which is a really costly effort typically. So we're happy to say that Clinton Gabe will be managing this internally for the city. We are recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Lee, Counsel, any questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? Thank you, Lee. Clint, you've got several things for us.
Yes, sir. I've got three bids that we've opened over the last few weeks, and so I'll go through those. And one of those came in a good bit under budget, which is always great news, and especially since the other two came in a little bit over budget. So luckily, that all cancels out. And so we're going to use the savings to cover the overages on the other two. So this first one I've got is for our construction of a traffic signal at Cotton Creek Drive and Medical Village Boulevard. And so we opened bids on November 4th, and Bagby and Russell was the lowest conforming bidder with a total bid amount of $533,000 and some change. And so we are recommending awarding at an amount not to exceed 540, as this was unit pricing, just in case we have any overages there. And so this will include the installation of mast arm traffic signals located at the intersection of Cotton Creek Drive and Medical Village Boulevard. And this new signal will provide protected left turns from Cotton Creek onto both Medical Village Boulevard to the south and the rear entrance to Publix and Pumpkin Place to the north. And this signal will also provide a safe pedestrian crossing across both streets. And so I've got a map of the area here. That's Publix to your north and Cotton Creek Drive on the left and right, and just kind of overlay the traffic signal plans on top of the intersection. And so we've actually had this design done for a couple of years, but we didn't really need it when we first got the design done. But now that we've got the Justice Center opening next year, we're going to have more traffic coming in and out of there. And then also, the red line that you see on there, that's actually part of the Highway 59 project, where lengthening that turn lane to turn south onto 59. And so as part of that, that left turn from Cotton Creek into Publix is getting taken away. And that's why we constructed the new entrance off of 59, so you can just make a right hand right in there instead of making this turn, because when traffic gets backed up here, especially in the summer, it creates some confusion there, because the left turns back up into that turn lane. So now they will be able to get in and out through that rear entrance. And so we originally had $300,000 budgeted in this year, and then we're going to carry that forward into next year. And so since this is more than that, we are going to move some of the funds that we were going to use for the Beach Walking District to pay for that overage. So staff recommends awarding the contract to Bagby and Russell in an amount not to exceed $540,000. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Clint. Counsel, any questions or comments? By the audience, next?
All right. This next one is to award the bid for construction of the Beach Walking District Phase Three to Trench Line Civil. So we opened bids on November 6th for this one, and we received nine bids on this project. And Trench Line was the lowest bidder with a total bid amount of just under 1.1 million. And again, this is unit pricing, so we're recommending not to exceed $1,150,000. And this will include totally rebuilding the roadway, the sidewalks, the own-street parking, stormwater, irrigation, and landscaping on West First Avenue from Highway 59 through the intersection of West First Street. So this is designed, you know, similar to the previous two phases of the walking district. It's going to be very similar. And this actually was included, originally was going to be included in Phase One, but we pulled that out once we knew that the Embassy Suites was getting built, because we didn't want to build it and have it all be destroyed. So we kind of saved this to come back after the fact. And so this is just, of course, the vicinity map, West First Avenue, that first block there, from Souvenir City to DeSoto's. Oh, there we go. And so this is just kind of the plan view of what it's going to look like. So we're going to have parallel parking on the north side and angle parking on the south there, right by Embassy Suites. And so we originally had 1.8 million budgeted for this project in this year, and then we're going to carry over the remainder in the next year's budget. But so staff recommends awarding the contract to Trench Line Civil in an amount not to exceed $1,150,000. And be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Clint. Counsel, any questions or comments?
I have one question. What's the, do we know what the vegetation is going to be for that?
We do. So we, it's kind of similar to what we have in Phase One and Two, but we told them we didn't want as much sod there. We wanted something that's more like ground cover. And then we have a couple of oak trees and palm trees, and I think some different ones on the corner. But it's similar, but a little bit different than what we had on the first two phases.
Is there any curbing to keep traffic off of the landscape areas?
Yes. Yes, it's all, I believe it's all curved on this one.
Okay. What's the construction timeline, Clint?
So this has a hard date of May 22nd as completion. So it's roughly five months. So it is going to be during spring break, but we put that hard deadline to get it done before the summer.
Thank you.
Well, that road will be closed.
So what we have in the traffic control plan is to make it one way, so you could turn off of 59 and still go that way. And we have to provide access for the Embassy Suites, their parking garage, you know, exits on this street. And so we're going to keep it open one way. There will be some temporary closures. We have three crossings where the storm drain crosses the road. But so that's like a three one-day closures. So that would be done before the spring break traffic hits, but we'll have to coordinate with all those businesses down there and let everybody know when we have those. But that should be the only time it's completely closed.
Anybody in the audience, questions, comments? Okay, Clint, another?
All right, one more. And this is the traffic signal at Coastal Gateway Boulevard and Wavemaker Way, also to Bagby and Russell. And so we opened bids on October 28th for this one, and Bagby and Russell was the lowest bidder with an amount of $317,000. And so we're recommending awarding not to exceed 320. And so this project will include similar to the other one, mast arm traffic signals at the intersection of Coastal Gateway and Wavemaker Way, which so this is the new entrance to the high school on the south side, and to the north goes to the Auburn Veterinary Facility. And this will provide protected left turns from both directions on Coastal Gateway, and will provide a pedestrian signal also for crossing the streets. And so this is what it looks like today, or a couple of months ago, I guess. But so you can see the Auburn driveway doesn't line up with that new entrance. So we've actually already reconstructed that, so that their driveway will now come out at this new intersection. And this is just from the plans. And so we originally had $200,000 budgeted for this project. And so again, we're going to use those, the savings from the Beach Walking District to cover those overages in next year's budget. And so you will notice this one is significantly cheaper than the one on Cotton Creek. And that's because we went ahead and bought all the equipment, because we were worried about long lead times that we've run into in the past on these traffic signals. So we've already ordered the controllers, the signal heads, the mast arms and everything. So this one, it's really mostly just installation, except they have to do the, you know, the mast arm footers, those big footers and some of that stuff.
Are we getting multiple bidders on these traffic lights?
We only got one on both of these. And, you know, we've contacted some people in other cities, and it's similar. Everybody down here, you know, usually the most we've ever got on traffic signals is two bids. There's just not many people doing it. But the costs are actually in line with what other cities are paying. And so as long as we've got a good contractor who's not taking advantage of the situation, it's.
Yeah. And in the past, when we have had multiple bidders, Bagby, I mean, they do most of the work down here, so they're typically very competitive, but just curious.
Any other questions, Counsel? By the audience, questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Wes Roseanne, I'm a homeowner at Village Craft Farms and a seasonal resident for six months. With this light going in here, I understand that's a city, that's Coastal Gateways, city-owned street, right?
Yes.
The bigger issue is going to be coming, and that's the intersection of the Beach Express and County Road, Beach, Coastal Gateway. As it exists now, the merge lane to go north is too short. It's merging into the outside lane, fast lane of Coastal Gateway or of the Beach Express. There are no signage, they even indicate that there's merging traffic ahead. Those plastic posts that are up, if you drive a low-profile vehicle, you can't see until you get to the end of those. And by the time you get to the end of those, if they're all up, they're gone. I mean, you can't, you can't see. You don't, you're out of acceleration lane at that point. I understand that Baldwin EMC trucks are having extreme difficulty making that turn and getting into their building because of the size of the truck. And they don't just, it takes a while for them to accelerate. By the time they accelerate, they're not having to make the right turn. The traffic on Beach Express, because I drive it at some degree of regularity, 55 is suggested as the speed limit. Anybody that drives it knows that many vehicles are traveling much faster than that. It's awkward configuration to turn left if you're south, if you're northbound and go and turn left onto Coastal Gateway, you have to come off of that, again, the outside lane and go through a retail establishment. It's just an awkward situation to drop the speed down to where it's safe. And I'm afraid somebody's going to come through there, and it's not going to be slowing down. And what's coming, before we got down here at the end of October, October, you turned down a development behind the veterinary clinic, based upon the fact that it's going to increase the traffic flow, et cetera. You have the high school traffic will be opening, hopefully in September, August, whenever the school starts. There is an unknown development just to the west, excuse me, just to the east off of the Beach Express and Coastal Gate. I don't know what it is. If it's a, it looks like another establishment housing. There's a Margaritaville growing in at the foot of the bridge. And all that just going to add to traffic. I just hope that the city works with Aldott. I know there's something on the head of a sign where they're soliciting some information. But I think there's going to be a real problem if some of these things aren't fixed. It's just, I don't think it was ever designed. I know it wasn't designed to handle the traffic. And the bridge traffic, being a free bridge now, has increased. And with the other bridge opening up, you'll probably have even more traffic going both directions. So I'm just concerned that the two entities may not be working together as much as they should. Hopefully, they are. But my understanding from sitting in these meetings is that's not always the case. So just like to consider that and put it on record that there are some concerns with that.
We're aware, and we're working really hard. I'm Jenny, just a moment, working really hard. We have agreed with Aldott, their one-way traffic plan. When you go one way north off of, when they convert it to one-way traffic, you go over the Wharf Bridge, you're going north, you will get to the point where it turns off to go back south. If you're coming south, you can go off to the right to continue one-way south. There is a loop there where you can make the loop, and then you can turn back into our schools off of the southbound traffic. So working real hard to make this one-way stuff work. We'd never dreamed that. We were coming off of the two-way traffic on the new road to the new bridge and going into the school. So anyone coming from the south going to the school would enter from the southern edge of that campus on the new road. That's still the plan, but you're not going to be able to get there without going through a little roundabout to get back to turn right to get in there. So the County Road Eight intersection for school traffic is a concern of everybody's. And at a minimum, we're working on creating that southern entrance. You could get in and out that way if you're a student trying to get home, because it's southbound. Trying to get there, you go northbound and then go back up to the north to get into it. So pretty complicated to explain, but we agree with you that it's convoluted and it's an issue. And we're working with Aldott, and we're hopeful that there will be a point where we'll have, I know there'll be a point where we have a new governor, and I believe at that point we'll have a new Aldott Director. And I'm hopeful that then we will be able to have some renewed conversations with more of an open mind about what a problem this creates for everybody. It doesn't just create a problem for Gulf Shores, it creates problems for the northern part of Orange Beach over there also. The one-way traffic plan is something that theoretical on paper, may work for an engineer, but practically for us trying to get in and off this island, it's not a good plan. But we have not been able to have that conversation with the existing governor, who trusts her Aldott Director and is not as engaged as we'd like her to be. And I think that's well-known everywhere. So we're kind of at a stalemate right there. We're working on Plan B, and we got a plan for Plan B when it opens. But we're hopeful Plan A is to get better consideration for the practicality of making both of these bridges two-way, and we can get in and out. That's longer term, and that's a lot of, Jenny's probably got more engineering information for you than that, but that just gives you my perspective on what we're trying to accomplish. And you're right, working with Aldott recently has not been issued, very little communication.
Would that do anything short-term signage? I mean, you're coming, traffic's going anywhere between 55 and 70, and you have traffic merging in from the wrong side of, I mean, how many places, when we all travel, have you ever seen emerge lane on the left into the fast lane of traffic on the lane?
It doesn't work getting on the way it is now.
No, no, it's not safe. I mean, and like I said, I-
Then they got to cross all the way over. You're right. We're working on it. Jenny?
And I can speak a little more to the intersection there at Eight and the Foley Beach Express. We have had several coordinations with Aldott in the last month, not only with us, but with the county. the county, other local jurisdictions, the school district as well. Aldott has initiated some corridor studies. They are studying Highway 59, Highway 98 and, and looking at some of the Foley Beach Express intersections and how they can make improvements to some of those intersections. They are acutely aware of the problems at this intersection and we have reiterated those, not only us, but the county as well. And, and we've been working with the county in Orange Beach to, to really find some solutions with Aldott together. So I know that Aldott is working on the situation, aware of the situation, and they are looking at some options to reconfigure the intersection or make longer turn lanes, increase signage. They're looking at all those things right now. I don't know that a decision has been made at this point to any changes, but it is in the works.
Okay. Would it be too much to ask to have warning signs that merging traffic ahead?
I mean, we've, we've asked for those things and mentioned them and they are taking it back to their engineering team to do some further evaluation. That's as much information as I have right now.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do drive and it's not safe.
It doesn't function like it should.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the comments, very, very spot on. That was all you had. Toby, you've got several things.
I do, yes, sir. The first thing I have is a renewal of a contract, Van Skoyak and Associates. They are our federal lobbyists and evaluate federal legislative ID issues and advise a city on them. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
No, I'm just proud that she pronounced it correctly.
I've been practicing.
She's been practicing, that's right. Anybody in the audience, any questions or comments? They've proved to be very valuable for everything that we work on. They're good to have ears in Washington that are looking out for our interests and let us know problems that may be legislation that may be hurting, harmful to us or met legislation that is potential to help us. That we're able to then talk to our representatives up there and make actions.
Yes, sir.
Next?
Yes, sir. The next one I have is Christie's Strategy Group. They are our state lobbyist and evaluate the state legislative issues and advise us on them.
Very similar situation, probably a little bit more connected in that they not only represent the city of Gulf Shores, they represent gumbo. So they work with all of us to try to put together a better understanding of opportunities in Montgomery. And that's opportunities to pass legislation, but it's also opportunities to kill legislation that is not in our best interest. So again, a very important thing. Toby?
Yes, sir. I have several board appointments. The first one is board appointment, reappointment for Philip Harris to the Planning Commission as the council representative. Reappointing Ken McKenzie to serve as the administrative law judge. It's a two-year term ending on 12/1/2027. Appointing Ike Williams to the Airport Authority to fill the unexpired term of Vic Roberts, who resigned his position. That term will end June 1st, 2026. And also appointing Deck McClellan to the Airport Authority to fill the unexpired term of Edgar McKee, who also resigned his position. And that ends March 11th, 2031.
One more?
No.
Didn't you have another at the airport?
Yeah.
Did you say, did you talk about Ike?
I did, yes, sir.
And I missed, I'm sorry. I was reading, I wasn't, I'm thinking.
That's okay, you scared me. I got him wrong.
Okay, well, maybe I'll do as good with mine. In addition to those, they have several appointments that do not require council action. They're appointed directly by the mayor through a letter. And I am opposing Ray Moore Jr. to fill the unexpired term of Jennifer Guthrie on the Planning Commission. Also, I'm reappointing as the mayor's designate, Dr. Mary Edwards Long. Her term will run concurrent with the mayor. Ray's term will, it is taking Jennifer's, finishing Jennifer's term, it'll end in December 31st of 2028. Dr. Long's term will end in November of 2029. I'm also reappointing Grant Brown as the administrative representative, which will run concurrent with the mayor, ending in November of 2029. So all of those are active and done and you can attend the meeting tomorrow. Ms. Moore? So that's our board reimporment, reappointments. Any counsel, any comments?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is an appeal from a disapproved tree removal permit application that we received at 1352 West Fairway Drive. So the tree protection ordinance, just some quick definitions. A protected tree is going to be any tree that is 12 inches or more, or any live oak that is six inches or more. And then your heritage trees or any tree equal to or greater than 30 inches or live oaks equal to or greater than 24 inches. Our review criteria for single-family houses, I'll start in the middle, letter C. So protected trees, if they're within 10 feet of the structure, they may be removed. Letter E, protected trees elsewhere may be removed if they meet certain criteria such as disease or injury, danger of falling on a structure, interfering with utilities, or creating an unsafe, unsafe vision clearance like near the road or an intersection. And then letter A, the first one, the heritage trees may only be removed if they're within the footprint of a principal building. Lastly, the tree protection ordinance does afford an appeal process. So when the application comes in, staff review the application based on the criteria found in the ordinance like we just went over. If it meets it, we are able to approve it. If they don't meet the criteria, then we deny the application. However, applicants do have the ability to appeal and it comes to city council, which is what we're here this afternoon doing. So the subject property or the, the issue before you this afternoon is 1352 West Fairway. The map on the left shows it's on the east side of West Fairway, about a dozen houses up above Fort Morgan Road and it backs up to the golf course. The map on the right just shows a closer image. Incidentally, that little parcel there on the north is owned by the city. This is an image from Google Street View, I believe from 2024. So the subject tree is a 31-inch live oak right, kind of right at the very front entrance of the house. As part of the original application, there were three true, three trees requested to be removed, protected oaks on either corner. Those were permitted to be removed and they have been removed already. They fell within the guidelines, but again, the, the live oak in the center did not meet the guidelines. Here are some other images taken by staff. So the image on the upper left, this is standing north of the tree looking southward. And the image in the bottom right is the other side. It's south of the tree looking northward, kind of that south corner of the, of the front of the house. You can see the, the tree really is all over the, the front of the yard, the, that left image, you can see where a tree limb has been removed from over the house. The tree itself is about seven and a half feet from that support column that's for the, the portico or the, the front of the house. And then this additional five or six feet to the, the facade or the, and, and the foundation of the house. So the, and the applicant is here and she'll have an opportunity to speak in just a moment. But the concern from the applicant is, is not necessarily following the house, but the damage being caused presumably by the roots on the walkway leading into the house. This is really hard to indicate in a 2D picture. So if you look at the, the left picture, the, the base of the column there, you can kind of see where it's lifted up on the, on the right side. And then in the foreground, the, 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 lost my word, the boundary between the brick pavers, you can see where it's separating. That's caused by some of the uplift, again, presumably from the roots. On that right image, again, you can see the, the boundary between the bricks, the pavers is wider there in the center. Again, that's from the, from the uplift. These were all taken by staff. These are photographs provided by the applicant. Again, it's really hard to show the, the unevenness and the, and the uplifting in a, in a 2D picture, but she puts some levels out there just to kind of show a little bit of, of the, the lift and the, and the change in elevation of the surface. Again, so, so I just kind of want to present the facts. The, the tree as sits today just does not meet those guidelines that were provided in the ordinance. So we, we had to deny the, the application. I will say thank you to Ms. Born. She is going through the proper process. The tree is still standing, it's not been cut down. She applied, it was denied, then she, she asked for the appeal, which is what we're doing here today. And again, Ms. Born is here, she can kind of make the appeal herself and, and any additional comments or questions, if you'd like to hear from her, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. What's the process for this? Will this, will we do this tonight or is this on, at the council meeting Monday?
It'll be next week's meeting, yes, sir.
Next week's meeting, okay. But this is an opportunity for a pre-discuss for us to give some time to think about it. Ms. Born? Yes, please. Thank you.
My biggest, my biggest concern is the, if you can show the picture again of the columns. The columns themselves are hollow. It's called an ephesus system and they're, they've got the stucco on the outside, but they're actually stick-built. The house itself, at the door on back, it's all concrete. But the roots are starting to come up between the columns and working their way behind the columns. And if the tree falls, it's going to just tear the whole front of the house off because all of those jets, if you look at the pictures of the house, all the jet outs on the front of the house are stick-built and they're stuccoed over. And it's got a really big hump right at my front door and then it goes down toward the door. And it's, it's a really walking, you know, unstable walking up there. And I'm just concerned that if we go, I've, I've talked to tree people and I've also investigated or looked into or researched, I can do a barrier, a concrete barrier, but a, all right, a, a system that they build, but it has to be two inches above grade so the roots don't go over it. And if I cut the roots on this side of the tree and then on the backside of the tree, I still have to get all the roots out, then take all my pavers up, put them all back down. And if I don't put the barrier, it's just going to happen again. I'm going to keep having to put money into this, this problem that it's creating. And, and my concern is if I cut those roots away to put the barriers up, then it's going to weaken the tree, possibly kill the tree. I don't really have enough room to do the two and a half to three times away from the trunk of the tree to cut it safely really, because it gets into the house up underneath my porch. And then I have to, like I said, build a barrier above grade to keep it from happening again. So to save me expenses further down the road on top of this initial that I'm going to have to spend to make it right, I don't want to kill the tree, but you know, it's possible that it's going to die anyway if I do all this to prevent this from further damage. So not into tree killing, but I've got to save my house too.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
Does our arborist have any comments on life of the tree? What would happen if the root system is cut? Can you speak to any of that remediation?
He, he's here, he, he can. I don't know if he came prepared to, to answer on that. Yeah, we, we did speak about, like was Ms. Born mentioned, some of the options available to place that barrier. Of course, Mr. Owens can speak better than I can.
Right. I'm not familiar with the barrier system she's talking about. It's the first I've heard of it, so I really can't speak intelligently, you know, to it right now.
But the probability of that tree surviving the cutting of these roots, can you respond to that?
If they cut the roots that are existing under the concrete pavers, the tree is likely to be damaged and may or may not die.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, I just, the, the columns look like they're holding up at least the front part of that roof. Those are structural columns.
Yeah, so they are holding up.
The roots are obviously growing around and, and if they're going around among the pavers, the, the columns at a minimum are at risk from this tree. And they're part of the structure of the house, not just a decorative column. Is that correct?
That's probably, yes, sir. Yes, sir, yeah, they are holding up that portico or, or, yeah, roof of the, of the front porch, yes, sir.
This deliberation will continue forward. It gives us something to think about during the week, reach out and talk to some of our consultants and, and we will, you can count on that happening and, but we will be deciding this at the next Monday's meeting and you're welcome to come back and, and we'll talk some more.
I will add, our tree ordinance committee has met and this was one item that we discussed as we evaluate the ordinance as it was written and its original intent, trying to evaluate existing homes versus new homes. And as you read the ordinance, we allow the trees within 10-foot of the home, planned home structure to be removed. This is well within that, or at the, within that 10-foot. So this may be a case where this was, ordinance really addresses more of a new home plan than an existing home plan, even though we would ask people to work around heritage trees on new homes. But these are the kind of things that we're hoping that we can address successfully in our rewrite and we are working on that.
Anybody with any question or comments in the audience? Anybody, any, on that? That's the last thing we have on our agenda. Grant, do you have an update for us?
Yes, sir. So coming off of Veterans Day and looking forward to Thanksgiving holiday, hopefully residents in Gulf Shores received a postcard in the mail that then also speaks to what's upcoming to honor the Christmas holiday. And before I forget, in the back of the room on the tables, we have these cards if you did not get one, if you'd like to bring some to some other people. So just like to invite the community to mark December the 4th, which is a Thursday night on their calendar for the Community Christmas at Sims Park. This is a 5:30 PM where Santa Claus will be delivered over to Sims Park. We'll have our annual snowball drop, which is a pretty awesome opportunity. We give away a $500 Visa gift card as a, as a main prize. This year, we're going to be involving the Gulf Shores High School Choir as part of our tree lighting ceremony. So looking forward to that evening. So that's Thursday, December the 4th at 5:30 PM. Once again, we're bringing back the Baldwin Pops Christmas concert. This is a free concert on December the 9th at 7:00 PM at the Erie Hall Meyer Civic Center. If you have not been to a Baldwin Pops evening, it's an amazing group that comes to entertain with some great Christmas music. And then for the littles and grandparents and parents, we have breakfast with Santa Claus, December the 13th. That's a Saturday morning at the Civic Center. And that's a $8 breakfast and then small children eat for free. And it's a great opportunity to, to get together and have an opportunity for the children to be with Santa Claus and all the children can get a free picture made with Santa Claus. So just some upcoming opportunities to engage with your community and like to encourage and invite everybody to participate. Thank you for the opportunity.
Dr. Aiken, Dr. Harrison, when I see Dr. Harrison here, I know there's something going, something going on.
That's right. I come with fantastic, wonderful, fabulous news. We received our state report card last week and we are very excited to announce that for the third year in a row, we have made straight As on our report cards. So all of our schools made an A as well as the central office. Our district report card was a 96, which puts us in the top four in the state of Alabama.
And Terrence, if you'll keep scrolling. By the way, Terrence got this information because I sent the wrong information about 45 seconds ago. So good job, Terrence. I appreciate your help. Anyway, we're proud of our schools, high schools. All, all schools, scores went up. High schools at a 93, middle school 95, and the elementary 95. High school and middle school are the second highest scoring schools in the, in the county. Is that correct?
The, the middle school was the highest.
Middle school was the highest, as a matter of fact. And then high school was second.
Second, that's right.
So we're really proud of where we're headed. We continue to increase every year and just great job by our, by our teachers and staff. One other piece of good news, we have, we've really worked on our fine arts program and continue to improve in that area. Grant mentioned the choir will be at the Christmas ceremony. Our choirs were at a regional choir ceremony and we had 12, 12 members from middle school and high school qualified for all-state choir, which is the most we've ever had. So really proud of the direction it's headed. So thank you all for letting us share.
12 high school and four middle school students.
Fantastic.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for, for good news. Thank you for, for good news. Anybody in the audience with anything they'd like to approach the council and discuss? It's your time, any subject, anything. If not, next Monday, we will be voting on these issues. Couple of really important issues to consider and discuss. And we hope you'll come back with us. Is there a motion, we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
We stand adjourned. Thank you for being here.